Okay.
This is passed out at the beginning.
Who's not here?
Maybe it's in your election stuff back there somewhere.
He's not here.
Oh, that's, that's not a seat. Oh, okay.
We're here.
All right.
Kathy's not though. We need Kathy. You have to wait for her.
Oh, yeah, I do have to have Kathy.
Kathy's probably got some extra coffee.
It's like one of those things to make chocolate milk.
Yeah.
Let's see, what do we want?
Where'd she lead to?
She's getting the recording.
Oh.
I have the recorder to record.
I can push the right buttons.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know which one it is. She is.
Comes Larry. You were gonna start without Larry?
I won't. I was looking. I did, I actually didn't see that he wasn't here.
Yeah.
I didn't either, he's around the corner.
Maybe he's with Kathy. There's somebody. Also warm.
Did you go zap it?
I went into the thing and got the hot water. I don't know, I think I used it all. I don't like microliving stuff.
So far.
Doc, he's fine. Not just Dr. Atkins would be very healthy.
Anybody know where Kathy is? Oh, there she is. There she goes. So that'll be G to before E. Right, Ron? Pardon me? G before E. Um, yeah. Okay.
There she is.
Not that I speak musical notes.
Before E.
I was waiting for Kathy.
She got it.
Well, you know, these clocks are five minutes, just nothing.
Where is, where is David? This atomic clock needs to get switched.
On record?
Welcome, everyone. This is the Lincoln City Budget Committee. Today is Monday, April 16th. 2018 is now six, depending on which clock, 6:03 or 6:08. I call to order this meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Larry Armstrong.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Riley Hogland.
Here.
Kevin Honebaum.
Here.
Doug Holbrook is excused.
Rick Mark.
Here.
Chester Norikas.
Here.
Nancy Oxenholt.
Here.
Dee Ritchie.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
And Don Williams.
Here.
Thank you very much. We will now be opening the floor for nominations for the Budget Committee Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate yourself, Riley Hogland.
I'll second.
Nomination in a second. Thank you. Any further nominations?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair. I'd nominate Dick Anderson.
Second.
But a nomination in a second. Further nominations for the chairman?
I'd like to nominate Susan Walkie.
Second.
And a second for Susan. Any further nominations? All right. Entertained a motion to close the nominations?
Still moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Very nice. Ms. Steer, may we have ballots?
You are the first nominee?
Yes.
Can you repeat the three nominees?
This is myself and Dick Anderson and Susan Walkie. Should've had it sit alphabetically. It was to chairs. Thank you. Oops, thank you.
We have one, one vote. Kevin. Kevin voted for Riley Hogland. Nancy, Riley Hogland. Dee Ritchie, Dick Anderson. Larry Armstrong, Dick Anderson. Don Williams, Dick Anderson. Rick Mark, Riley Hogland. Deanna Hinton, Riley Hogland. Riley Hogland, Riley Hogland. Susan Walkie. Susan Walkie. Judy Casper, Susan Walkie. Dick Anderson, Riley Hogland. And Chester Norikas, Dick Anderson. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six votes for Hogland. Four for Anderson and two for Walkie. So Riley, you're our chair. And then we will need a, a motion.
I move to appoint Riley Hogland as chair.
Second.
Very good, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Very nice. All opposed, say nay. Very good, thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys. I now open the floor for nominations for the Budget Committee Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Dee Ritchie. Experienced from last year.
Second.
Chair, I nominate Kevin Houleben.
Close. It's a close. A second for Kevin?
Yes.
Yes. Motion in a second for Kevin. Honebaum, right?
Honebaum.
Hone?
Honebaum.
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 How about hound? Kevin Honebaum.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to end the nominations.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Ms. Steer, may we have the ballots? Oh, did we?
No, you didn't.
No, okay. Thanks. All in favor of closing, all in favor of closing the nominations, say aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you from the left. Now, may we have? You like that?
That's not the left over there.
I think I slipped you on the wrong side.
Caught that little joke, didn't you? Almost.
Stick your fingers just.
Thanks. I didn't reach out. Yes. All right, I'll look for you.
For Vice Chair, one vote, Kevin. From Kevin. Nancy Oxenholt, vote for Kevin. Dee Ritchie, vote for Kevin. Larry Armstrong, vote for Dee Ritchie. Don Williams, Kevin Honebaum. Rick Mark, Dee Ritchie. Deanna Hinton, Dee Ritchie. Riley Hogland, Dee Ritchie. Susan Walkie, Dee Ritchie. Judy Casper, Dee Ritchie. Dick Anderson, Dee Ritchie. And Chester Norikas, Dee Ritchie.
So entertain a motion to appoint Dee Ritchie as Vice Chair.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Congratulations, Mr. Ritchie.
Do we need a motion to close the?
It doesn't say anymore. I think I messed it up three times. Fourth time, I got it. Good on that one. See, three times, you learn after three times. It's funny. Okay. We are now on to the rules of procedure. The rules of procedure as stated. The Budget Committee must receive the budget message from the Budget Officer, which is the city manager, review the proposed budget, hear public comments and questions, approve the budget for council adoption, and approves the property tax amount or rate of property taxation. As provided in the state law, the Budget Committee must receive the budget document before the first meeting reviewing the proposed budget. The document must also be made available to the public at the same time. Once the public, once the budget document has been made public, only the Budget Committee and the governing body can make changes. The Budget Committee may request any information it requires for review of the budget document from the staff. Generally, these requests are directed to the city manager or department head. The Budget Committee does not approve new personnel, employment contracts, or salary schedules. However, these items are part of the proposed budget and have a fiscal impact. While the Budget Committee cannot negotiate contracts, it can adjust the dollar amount in the proposed budget that is available for these expenses. These adjustments would affect staffing or service levels. The Budget Committee can also review capital expenditures and make adjustments to them. We also have a request to move the comments from citizens present from line G to before the budget message presentation, which is letter E. And is that also going to include the hearing aspect of? Is that also that same Debbie's shaking yes? Okay. So, Mr. Chandler, if I may do that, ask for, I don't have a sign-up sheet, so, or anything like that. So, do we just, oh, there is one. Wonderful.
There is one.
Thank you, kind sir.
Mr. Chairman, could, another kind of procedural thing before we get into comments and stuff, if you don't mind?
I don't.
Could we agree of a termination time for this evening? You know, no later than X?
We were looking at, our goal for tonight. Our goal for tonight is to get through the general fund and the VCB fund, or nine o'clock, whichever comes first.
I mean, okay. I mean, is, is anybody opposed to a 9:00 PM stop time?
At, at the latest, but.
I mean, I'm not, thank you.
But if we can get done earlier with.
Sure. Then we're gonna hold you. No? Okay. Okay. Okay, so. Oh. I didn't have this wonderful piece of paper.
Well, it's the, it's.
I don't know how to read on this. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? For those that wish to speak before the Budget Committee, we can have a sign-up sheet. If you, if you change your mind after the people that have spoken, please just raise your hand and we'll let you speak.
Mr. Chair, if I could just take a moment of explanation on this, in as much as that I know what at least two of our speakers wish to speak about. And there needs to be just a bit of background information. Last year, the general fund revenues exceeded expenditures by $1 million. And it was determined that that $1 million would serve two purposes over. And it was, it was forecasted that $1 million would continue each year. And so it was determined that the first, that funds would be used as a hedge against inflation. And then second, that those funds would be spent on one-time projects. And there were several projects that we did last year that we're in the process of doing now. This budget carries that policy forward. Revenues, we have put $945,000 into the non-departmental department. It's right now listed under land purchase, but that's really just a placeholder while you consider the use of those funds. Last year, I came up with about five recommendations on where to spend that. And we spent an awful lot of time talking about those recommendations. I changed the approach this year by just simply putting the number in a line item and then listing in the budget message the requests that I have received, either from outside groups, from members of this committee, from the city council, or from the staff. And I just wanted to briefly go over those. They exceed $945,000. And then I know, I know of at least a couple of groups that would like to, to address that. There was a, a request for $100,000 for the contribution to the FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the new hospital following its construction. There was a request for a teen center, which would cost $46,250. There was a request for the Salacy, a parking lot on Salacy Drive, which we are estimating right now would be about $300,000. There was a request to extend the Taft Dock above and beyond the repairing of it, which, this is a very rough estimate of about $500,000. We based that estimate on the cost of repairing the existing one. There was a request to add additional emergency caches, which we have put in $15,000 in that request. That's $15,000 per cache. There was a request from the Cultural Center for $258,000. There was a request for coin-operated lockers in the community center of $35,000. There was a request for workforce housing, first of property acquisition of $300,000. Property incentives of $500,000. There is a request for public art of $75,000. There is a request for street improvements, including storm drain of $400,000. And then there were requests for the Taft Park improvements of $500,000. And then, of course, there's a long list of street sewer and water projects. And so with that, I will give up my seat and turn it over to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chandler, before you go, the request for street improvements where specifically?
That has come from the staff. And so when we get into the street plan, we'll go through all of the, all of the street improvements.
Mr. Chair, one question on all of these lists. How many of these items are part of your budget versus somebody else's request to be part of the budget?
The hospital contribution was a request from an outside group. The teen center is a request from the city council as part of their priorities. The Salacy parking lot was a request from the city council. City council member. This extension of the Taft Dock was a request from a city council member. The emergency cash is a request from a city council member. The Cutler's, or I'm sorry, the Cultural Center request is from an outside group. The coin-operated lockers for the community center was from staff. Workforce housing was from staff. Parks, public art was from staff. All of the rest of those came from staff. And as we go through the budget, you'll see clear why some of those were dropped out by staff and why they were put there. Pardon me, Mr. Chandler. Mr. Ritchie, did you get your question answered?
It, it answered my question.
That helped?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. First to speak is Miles Schlesinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, Budget Committee. I would like to remind you of the last time I spoke as part of the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. And we presented to the council a PowerPoint presentation on what the lake is worth to Lincoln City. And the council, in their wisdom, told the city attorney to go and find out how much it will actually cost. And I think, I believe they authorized $7,500. And with that, I went to Palm Springs for a month and came back and heard that it was $10,000. And the council decided to put it over to the Budget Committee for the next, next year. And I would like to remind the council that Devil's Lake Regatta Park plays an important role in the community. And by doing that, it is a center stage for events. And we can do a better job at events. And we don't want to see the Parks and Recreation Director hogtied, actually, by this deed restriction for a regatta. And that was, the last regatta was held in 1941. So we've had other events there and the park should be used. And we're willing to take whatever you decide. But get it into a form where the deed isn't a question any longer. And it can be used for everything that we want it to. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. Any questions for Miles?
Miles, could you, I didn't quite get the specificity of what it was here. You were talking about $10,000 to do what?
$10,000 to have the deed restriction, which the deed, the deed at Regatta Park was unfortunately given to the county and then to the city with a deed restriction that restricted all commercial activity, vendors and such, at the park until, unless there was a regatta. It allowed cigar smoking, which isn't allowed any longer, but not the sale of food and/or beverages.
So this was to, the, the money was to investigate further how to, to get it.
Release the deed right. Thank you. Thank you, Miles.
May I ask?
Sure, absolutely.
Miles, there was also discussion of a potential partnership between the district or the neighborhood and city council with us. Do you, have you researched that any further?
I have. Our last board meeting was last Thursday. And I came and presented to the board a request that we budget, as the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District, a contribution to the, to the process of getting the deed restrictions removed. But they only had three members of the board there. So Joshua Brainard, the director, is putting it on the agenda for our next meeting. And I would hope that I can present to the council a, a nice contribution from the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District for taking this deed restriction off. And perhaps the Neighborhood Association can make a donation too, so that we can get the thing finally done.
Thank you, Miles. Up next, we have Steve Brown.
Thank you, Chair and Budget Committee. I appreciate the time before you today. My name is Steve Brown, and I'm a director on the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. I'm also a board member of the Neighborhood Association on Devil's Lake. What I'm requesting today to piggyback off what was just said from Miles, what we'd like to do is have this committee request language in the budget narrative that ensures that the deed restriction would be researched. And we would like to see this committee put a line item either in the VCB's budget, the parks' budget, or the attorney's budget under consulting until this deed restriction is resolved. I think it's imperative that we go back to the original deed and the intent of the heirs when the property was donated. It was donated to be public land. And it was to be open to the public. It was originally for the regatta, but it has served many, many other functions over the year and has been a highlight of this great city. Miles had spoke with regards to the impact to the economy and the revenue that it brings. It's a sad day when we have to cancel activities based on a perceived restriction on the deed that was never brought up before. I do have a copy of the deed. And if anyone in the committee requests it, I've made it available to you. Any questions?
Maybe hand that to Kathy, so that could be entered if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Maybe we have Bill Sexton, please.
Hello, Mr. Chair, committee members. My name is Bill Sexton, and I'm a board member on the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District and also a contractor on the lake. I'd like to have your support in creating a line itemized, or a line item so that we could move forward with the deed. I know everybody involved is passionate about using the lake, seeing it get better and improve with everything the city's doing to it. And I hope you can see it within the budget to add whatever it may be, and so we could, there again, move forward. And as a board member, we're going to try and do everything we can to assist with the city and its budget issues along that avenue. So I appreciate your time, and I'd like to give a kudos out to Joe Miller, who's taking care of the parks right now, and the city manager, Lila, for her efforts and you guys' efforts as well, in trying to keep the parks up so everybody can use them as they're designed for. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Maybe we have Nikki Price, please.
Hello. Yes, so I'm Nikki Price. Pardon? I'm Nikki Price, and I am the executive director of the Lincoln City Cultural Center. I'm here tonight with Board President Greg Burton. He's handing out the packets right now. And also with our past president, John Collier, who is our current treasurer. And we're here to give you some information about the special budget requests that we've made for capital improvements that were moved from the Economic Development Department into this special projects one-time fund. So as a bit of background, hoping everybody understands, the Lincoln City Cultural Center is a 501(c)(3) in good standing, and we have a volunteer board of directors and an annual operations budget of about $340,000. With that, we support a staff of six, 125 volunteers, serving about 6,500 hours per year, about 350 arts, culture, and community programs, and all the utilities and maintenance and janitorial at the Lincoln City Cultural Center. So in other words, we're a lean, mean arts and culture machine. We do a lot for a little, and, but that doesn't leave a lot of room for capital improvements. And that's why we put forth some requests for you to consider as we improve the D-Lake School together. So the first one on the list is replacement of the exterior windows. So the, our nonprofit has already replaced six of the windows at the Lincoln City Cultural Center, but that leaves about 24. And they're all in various stages of disrepair. Some are cracked, some are clouded, leaky, and from various eras in the school's long history. So what we're proposing is that they get replaced all at once in a manner that's befitting of the historic character of the school. Now, we could replace them or repair them one by one as they fail, but we feel that doing that would be the same thing that the school district did for 60 years, and that's what kind of ended up with the sort of haphazard experience that we have now. So this budget line, this request would replace all the windows and provide us with a starting point to go forth with our maintenance plans. So moving on to our second budget request, which is for $50,000 to support design and engineering of a project that we're calling the Cultural Plaza, the Lincoln City Cultural Plaza. So in accordance with our strategic plan, for the past two years, we've been working on a large-scale plan that would redevelop the exterior grounds of the Lincoln City Cultural Center. We've been working with a landscape architect called Shapiro Didway out of Portland, and we spent about $11,000 of our development funds to get it to this point, this sort of conceptual point. And I've provided in your packet some information on the different concepts that we have. In short, it would redevelop the entire 2.5 acres, and it would provide areas for cultural arts programming in an envelope, sort of around the main facility. It has a path that begins on one side and ends on the other that's drivable, so that our farmers market vendors can come and load and unload as you go around. And also, this ADA-accessible path will take you to plaza areas and community gathering spaces. This plan also takes advantage of the south exposure on the south side of the building and provides a lot of extra space around the building on the east side for people to recreate and to enjoy the arts. It improves the parking lot, taking the number of parking spaces up to 103. And also, works in tandem with city plans to improve Sixth Street, to improve the parking, making it better nose-in so that it's less hazardous, and provides sidewalk opportunities for people to come from Devil's Lake State Park and up and around to our area and also to the light without having to negotiate the sort of dangerous turn that there is there. There are plans for the Head to Bay Trail to come to this area, and if it did, it would attach to our project here, and people will be able to take the Head to Bay Trail and take it straight up to the light at Sixth Street. So this is all our concept, and this is how far we've gotten. And we'd like to get our design and engineering finished by the end of 2018. We have sort of a deadline ahead of us. If we can finish this design and engineering by the end of this year, we will be in line for some large statewide granting opportunities, including the cultural capital construction funds through the legislature, which, as we know, meets in the beginning of 2019. If we miss this deadline, we will be out of the running for several years. And so we're pushing forward as fast as we can. Completing the design and engineering completely will cost up to $180,000. And so we are asking for your contribution to this design process. In addition to our grants we have out to the NEA and Oregon Cultural Trust so that we can further this project. And if I may have permission to speak a bit longer? Thank you. Our third grant request, I'm sorry, our budget request, is for the city to put forth a small amount of our concentration, our construction costs, about $150,000. So we anticipate that this project is going to cost $1.6 million by the time we're done, and we are looking forward to raising that amount. We're going to city council in May for official approval and permission to proceed. And if we would get that permission to proceed, we'll begin a multi-year plan to do the fundraising, which includes a capital campaign and lots of grants, opportunities in state, regional, and national. But the first question that most of the funders and the donors are going to ask us is, what is the contribution of the city of Lincoln City? And who owns this property? And who will, whose citizens will benefit in the long run? And we believe that if we can't go to the funders with at least a good idea of what the city plans to contribute, we'll face an uphill battle in trying to raise this kind of money. So we ask you to consider this larger sum, either in this budget cycle or in another budget cycle, so that we can have a commitment as we go forward. It's going to represent about 10% of the entire process, and we'll use it to leverage this really wonderful nonprofit public partnership that we have, so that we continue to progress on this project. So I'm available for any questions you might have. You know, it's a lot of information to digest at once.
Chair?
Yes.
Nikki, if everything plays out the way, in the ideal way, what would you expect the completion of this project timeline?
We think within five years. We have to phase it, and we're just getting into that process. But we see a lot of ways that it can be phased and still not interrupt programming for long periods of time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Nikki, on the northeast corner, I see a little, what's the island there?
The northeast corner?
A little circle there. No, maybe I'm looking at this wrong. Okay, so.
Northwest.
Okay, yeah. What I'm concerned about is, this year I've become a T-ball coach, and this is a field for T-ball practice, and I think some of our little football players play there also.
Yeah.
Are you going to be eliminating that field?
Yes, in accordance with this plan.
Where do we put these kids at that point?
Well, we are happy to provide that field, and the city, I know, is also happy to provide that field, but it isn't developed properly for any of those uses. The bathrooms have to be specially brought in. The field is not groomed to be a field.
It's just a practice.
It's sort of an ad hoc use when there's no other fields available.
Right, and now we're going to have one less, is my concern.
Yes.
And as I've been learning, there's nowhere to go.
Yeah, yeah, it's a problem.
And I'd be hesitant to take one more piece away.
Right. I know what you mean. That field is used by T-ball and sometimes football in the fall as well. But in return for taking this area off of, you know, out of our ball fields, ad hoc ball fields, we get a lot better parking that's very well organized, so we can get a lot of cars in a small period of, in a small amount of space.
Yes, Ms. Kathy?
Nikki, you mentioned parking. You can fit 103 cars, as you have on your diagram. Is that what the new parking allocation will be?
Yes, it is. And that doesn't count the Sixth Street parking.
Okay.
And what is your current parking capacity?
Well.
Pardon? I know it's not very many. I was just trying to get a comparison.
It's 88 line spaces, and then we have festival style.
We know that. Any further questions for Ms. Price? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me. I will try to keep my comments brief and leave time for questions. But my name is Kathy Sandoval. I am the executive director of the Foundation for the North Lincoln Hospital. I've been in my post since about November 1st of 2017, so I've got about five months under my belt so far. I jumped into this job tasked with the job of finding $7 million to finish our new hospital facility, and that is why I am before you today. My request to this council is $100,000 for fixed fixtures, furnishings, and equipment in the finished building. The entire project budget is, was set for $35 million, and that's probably going to go up a little bit by a few million dollars. The FFNE that's required is based on that budget of about 20% of the overall project budget. As of this day today, we have raised about $3.8 million of that $7 million target. So the $100,000 from the city would go a long way towards bringing us towards that goal. The FFNE will be what will finish the hospital. As is, it is slated to be built as a building, bricks and mortar, and then everything that the foundation raises will finish it out with, literally with computer equipment and phone lines and couches for people to sit on. Let's see. I would like to speak to you briefly about the economic impact. I don't know that it really needs to be emphasized too much. It seems pretty obvious. But I do want to let this council know that our hospital is one of the economic drivers of this town and of this county. I spoke with our HR department in preparation for this meeting and learned that we have 370 employees currently at the hospital with an average annual salary of $74,000. So that's putting in $27,380,000 into the economy just in salaries, all the places people shop, everything they support, the real estate that they purchase. A state-of-the-art facility like we are designing right now will make the job of recruiting and retaining providers a lot easier. That's a big challenge in a rural area, to find good doctors and good providers to take care of our folks. So when we bring in new recruits and they see the current facility, I mean, put yourself in their place, is it super exciting to live in a small town with that sort of facility? It really isn't. So when we have this beautiful new facility, that job will be a whole lot easier. It will motivate a lot of really great providers to stay. It's also one of the biggest factors when people consider putting down roots and staying in this community. That is, of course, one of the first questions people ask is, what is the health care like? And we're very proud to say that our health care that we can offer is really top-notch. In the last five years, we've seen nothing but demand go up, revenue go up, and service lines go up in almost every area. I know you can't see this, but this is every service line from the last four years compared. Most of this chart is green, and those green areas mean that those are years, successive years of increasing demand and increasing revenue. So this is not an issue that will go away. We have to come together and provide a new hospital facility to continue to provide this excellent care. Let's see, we had 11,000 emergency rooms, emergency room visits last year, 1,125 of those people were admitted into the hospital. We had 18,646 patient days in our hospital, some other things. We had 24,000 diagnostic imaging procedures, 107,000 pharmacy orders through our pharmacy, and 145,000 lab tests. So just imagine how our community would feel if those services weren't available close by for folks. So all of those factors considered together, our new facility is going to be very agile. It's making the best use of the possible space that we can. Our current facility has a lot of wasted space. The new design has no wasted space whatsoever. It is comprised primarily of what we're calling flex rooms, which means that the rooms can be multipurpose based on the demands for that particular day. So it's not, there's not the wasted space that often happens in hospitals. Let's say you've got 25 inpatient beds, but only nine inpatients. That means there's so many rooms just sitting unused. That will not happen in an agile, flexible facility like this one. So we're very proud of this new design. It's very cutting-edge, and it's going through the process of being approved. So if I just have a couple more seconds here, I, we feel, I feel that the $100,000 from the council is a very reasonable ask. We did not go to the taxpayers to ask for an increase in taxes on this. And so I really, I ask you to give it some serious consideration. I can't think of a project that would impact more people than our new hospital. Are there questions?
Question?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
When is the construction supposed to be completed?
We, we just had a construction team meeting today, and we did learn that our original timeline of June is set. So you will see earth movers out there in June, barring any unforeseen thing.
And when do you need the $100,000?
When do we need the $100,000? Well, the FFNE comes in at the end. So, you know, it could wait for another budget cycle if it needed to. The benefit of being in on this one is that we can demonstrate support and just sort of building momentum. So the more, I can say we have raised already, the more other donors get excited.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe the question was, when do you think that the construction will be completed?
Oh, right. Well, I did speak with Chris Lamar, who's our engineering director, and I asked him about that. I asked him when they'll start drawing down the money that we've already, we have sitting, we have sitting in our accounts right now, waiting to be drawn down for this project. And he said they want to start using it probably within the next 12 months. They'll start buying FFNE.
What I'm asking is, when do you expect construction to be completed?
Oh, right. And the construction should be completed at the end of 2019.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Kathy, you might, I know you briefly talked about it, but maybe remind us all that who's paying for the actual building. There's a difference between the construction financing for the new hospital and what you're asking for.
Right. So you can jump in if I overlook something, but basically, the Health District traded the land to Samaritan Health Services for the $35 million for this project. And that is based on what our financial analysis felt we could safely finance and not get into trouble. The FFNE is all, is not a part of that money. Is that what you're asking, sir?
And I think just for edification, the taxpayers of Lincoln City aren't paying for this new hospital, that it's Samaritan who's actually building. So. that it's Samaritan who's actually building, so this $100,000 request for FFNE is money that, you know, you, it's not, they're not, we're not building the hospital, we the taxpayers, and so it would be our contribution in essence
Correct.
to that new facility.
Mr. Chair?
Sir? Yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of this, and, and I think you should spend it right away and find a place to put these things that you need in storage, so you can save the money now.
There you go, I like that.
The costs are gonna go up next year.
They are absolutely gonna go up.
I'm gonna put them somewhere, and I think we've had the argument before about funding the Cultural Center, and how important that is to our city, I can't think of anything much more important next to the police squad here, uh, than, than a hospital.
Than a hospital, right.
Than, and expanding its services and reach, and I know that, uh, I had a neighbor who lost dialysis treatment here years ago because of funding, and, uh, I, I just, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm in favor of what you're asking for, and I think you should come back again next year and ask for the same or more.
Well, thank you, sir, and I am happy to announce we are bringing back dialysis sometime this summer, probably sometime in June, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Um, I do have copies of the new facility, if you haven't seen it, um, I only brought one set of copies, so I will just pass them around.
You can hand it to Kathy, and then she can make it part of the record.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any further comments from the public? Alright, Mr. Chandler?
Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chandler, I just had, um, one little question before you get started. Um, the handout from the Cultural Center says 56,000
Yeah.
for windows, and in the budget message, it says 58.
I, that was the number I had, but I would go with theirs if that's correct.
Okay.
We got a thumbs up, 56, 58?
56.
56.
And, Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I need to just get a clarification about when we're gonna discuss outside agencies, 'cause I'm gonna declare a conflict of interest in that.
Yeah, we probably, so the, the goal today, so if we're gonna go through the line items, you know, we have the, the, the message separate than the, the line items, you know, general fund, resources, resources, you know, we're gonna go through it that way, city council, administration. If it follows through with the budget message, you know, that we can go down through that way. The goal tonight was to reach which part?
We're hoping to complete the general fund, which includes the outside agency request.
I just wanna make sure when we get to that point.
Yeah, and then if we, if we have time to go into the, uh, Visitors and Convention Bureau Fund.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I ask for, um, clarification on that? I'm, I'm involved in a nonprofit agency on the Board of Directors that has received some funding, is that considered a con? I don't know what counts as a conflict, okay.
Um, I also serve on a nonprofit board that has requested information, it's no personal benefit to you.
Right.
Right, Angela, yeah. Okay. Alright. So shall we?
Okay, um, as I mentioned, our goal is to cover the general fund tonight, um, and then if we can get to the VCB fund. Um, as far as the discussion on the budget message, um, the budget message will follow the, uh, the table of contents, and so the first part that I intend to give is just really the overview, some of the policy changes, some of the formatting changes, and then if you have questions about the, uh, the budget message as it pertains to a department, I would just simply ask that you hold those until we get to that department, and then, and then we'll remain in an orderly fashion. Also, just as a reminder, as you have, uh, information that you would like to ask, uh, if we can answer that tonight, we will, if not, we'll go back and do some research and bring that back to you. And also, if, if you have something you want to change in the budget, we also will do some research on that and bring it back, and then when the budget is ready to be, um, approved, we would vote on each, uh, budget item, uh, each amendment individually and then on the budget together. Okay, the, the budget is made up of fund types, there are, um, uh, governmental types, which are primarily tax-supported, there's enterprise funds, which are fee-based, uh, the two that people are familiar with are water and sewer, they are meant to act like businesses. There's capital improvement funds, which are meant to cover the, uh, all of the different infrastructure capital projects for all of the different funds. There's an internal service fund, which has vehicle maintenance, um, IT, and, um, GIS services, their customers are the city departments, and then finally, there's debt service funds, uh, which accounts for the debt of the city in all of the different, uh, various funds. Now, last year, we went through these on, as they are listed by their number, so, number 111 is the general fund, number 120 is the, uh, Lincoln Square Fund, and so forth. This format is, this budget has changed that format, so that when we get to, say, the park maintenance fund, we'll deal with all park maintenance funds, the operation fund, the capital fund, when we get to water, sewer, we'll deal with all of those, uh, including the debt service funds with them, so, as we, uh, hopefully it'll make it easier as we talk about one service or one activity, we focus on all of the different funds that affect that. We also, there were some questions that came from committee members during the past month. Um, we'll deal with these in the, as the, as we address those sections pertaining to those questions. Uh, on your desk are some questions we received from council, or from Mrs. Hinton today, Committee Member Hinton, and, uh, those ones we have completed, we have some questions regarding the water, uh, rates and how we charge with those, we'll deal with those when we deal with the water budget. We also had some questions on sidewalk, which we'll deal with as we, uh, deal with the street budget, and then we had a question on fluoridation, uh, which we'll deal with that when we deal with the water budget. And then Councilor Hinton has some questions that are very policy questions, she sent to me a week or so ago, and I'm still in the process of, uh, of responding to those, and I'll have those done for the next meeting. Okay, um, alright, we're be, um, we're on, we'll be summarizing the policies that are found on pages four and five of the budget message. Um, as I mentioned, we'll just highlight these and discuss them in greater detail when we talk about the individual sections or services. The first policy proposal that we're, that we're presenting with this budget pertains to our utility rates and specifically to sewer. The city prepared a 15-year capital plan for sewer, uh, upgrades and replacement. Uh, in the past, these projects were funded through debt and property taxes. We discussed this capital improvement plan with the, uh, city council, and, uh, at its total was about $21 million. There was quite the sticker shock when we discussed this with the city council, and they asked us to look for alternative ways to fund this. Uh, one of those ways that we discussed was through, um, debt, uh, that would be through, uh, something like a tax increase on property taxes. Uh, um, there was not generally a lot of excitement for that, and so we began to look at other ways on first, how do we do it with debt versus how do we do it on a pay-as-you-go? Uh, figuring that we would need about $1 million a year in order to accomplish either the debt or the, um, or the pay-as-you-go plan. What this budget proposes is to increase your total utility base rate, that is for the amount of water and sewer, by 3.9%, which is this year's inflation rate, which amounts to $1.97 per month. In the past, we have split that amount between the, um, uh, water rates and the sewer rates. Uh, for this year and for the next two to three years, we propose to, um, uh, apply all of that to the sewer rates. Uh, so the overall amount would not be increasing, but, uh, beyond what we have done historically, which has been 4% to 5%, but it would all go to the sewer fund. If we do that for three, maybe four years at the top, that would give us about $1 million per year, uh, which we could then use for either as a pay-as-you-go or for a debt service payment, uh, on our capital projects. The staff's recommendation is going to be to do a pay-as-you-go unless there's an emergency that comes up that requires more than we're able to do. The streets, um, over the last three years, the three budgets that I've been involved with, we have devoted general fund resources to street overlays. Uh, the idea behind this is that we would include, or that we would overlay all of our roads, our paved roads, over a 20-year period. Uh, we estimated that would cost somewhere between $400,000 to $500,000 a year, so the general fund includes a transfer of $500,000 to the street capital fund. We'll talk more about the roads on where that will be done, where the overlays, the road construction, storm drain construction, sidewalk construction, will all be done as we, um, as we get into the street budget. Purse continues to be a challenge, uh, purse is the public employee retirement system. It's, uh, the state continues to estimate that the cities will see a 20% increase every two years. We had our 20% increase last year, uh, we started this two years ago, that instead of trying to absorb a full 10% or 20% increase, we would propose a 10% increase each year. Uh, we, that has been an easier pill to swallow, um, and, uh, we propose to do that again this year. There has been a new proposal that actually has been adopted by the state, in which we're reviewing that, that allows cities, um, to pay off their portion of the unfunded liability early. Uh, we're studying that now, and we'll bring that back with a little more discussion to the city council. In the audit statements, uh, the city carry, or the, the state carries over a $2 billion unfunded liability. That is broken out with all of the agencies that participate in purse, including the city. I believe our, uh, amount that we owe is about $1.7, $1.8 million. As I mentioned, there is a proposal by the state to allow some of that to be paid off early. Uh, as we study upon that, and we'll bring this back to the city council, it would be our proposal to use that extra 10% that is, we would collect this year, but doesn't go into effect until next year, as a means of, uh, of meeting that, uh, early, early payoff of some of it. The next item that I wanted to mention is the outside agency request. Last year's budget increased outside agency requests to $150,000. This budget includes, uh, includes that $150,000 for an outside agency request. Now, you might ask, the requests that we heard tonight, why did we not put those into there? It's because the requests that, uh, we receive on the outside agency requests are generally ongoing requests, and, uh, and what we've heard tonight are for one-time, uh, requests for funding, which meets the goal that we have with the, with that extra $945,000.
The, the additional $100,000 that we took, we added to this last year, was part of the $1 million, um, the extra $1 million, correct? Last year's budget, to increase the outside agency request, the money that we used to increase it was from the?
I believe $50,000 of it was from the $1 million.
And so what we've done?
And we had proposed, we had, we had proposed an increase to $100,000, and then we added $50,000 from the $1 million.
And what we've done in this budget is the, it's, it's simply coming out of the regular operations and not out of the one-time request. Uh, that certainly can be increased, or it can be decreased as you, as you desire, I believe we had over $200,000 in requests. Um, we've already discussed the general fund, fund, oh, I'm sorry, the general fund fund balance. Um, we proposed as a policy statement last year that we would keep that at $6 million as a rainy day fund in the unappropriated fund balance, and $1.9 million in the contingency, uh, that can be used if we run into any problems throughout the year. This, uh, is approximately five months' worth of operation and acts as, as I mentioned, a rainy day fund. This budget also propos, this budget also includes an additional $717,000 in the unappropriated fund balance. Uh, a request that I'm considering, or at requesting that you consider, is that we take that 700-plus thousand dollars, I'm sorry, it's $775,000, and apply that into the capital facilities in case it is needed on the, um, police building. If you recall, we had established a $10.5 million budget, the city council established that. Uh, we were looking at a possibility at $11.5 million, I recommended that we go at $10.5 million, 'cause you can always go up. Um, we will know more over the course of the next month as to how we will come out on the budget as the city council is scheduled to meet with the architect and the contractor on May 7th. So one of the things I would request that you consider is that we keep the unappropriated fund balance at $6 million, and the remaining amount be used, or be put into the capital facilities fund, so that it's there if needed. If not, it can just, or you can put it in the contingency fund to transfer over if it's needed. If not, then it can just remain, it can go back into the fund balance of the general fund. We've talked about the $945,000, there's one item that I would just simply mention a little bit more on this, and that's the coin-operated lockers for the community center. Uh, that was an item that I discussed with our, uh, our Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, didn't feel that it should go into the budget, put it in here in an off chance that maybe you would feel so, but it's not a very high priority for us.
Can you explain how it's different from the coin-operated lockers we currently have?
Yes, the coin-operating locker, it use a quarter and it returns the quarter. Uh, these would keep the quarter. That's the best way to describe it.
So that, so that would take the, what was, what was their, their estimate?
It was $35,000.
No, 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 what was their, what was their, um, I forget, what was?
Oh, on their, uh?
Their people that they had per year? Oh, I forget where it is, I don't know how many, sorry.
So that, that becomes revenue for them?
That becomes revenue, yeah. We estimated at the very best we could do would be about $11,000 a year, but I suspect it would be much less than that.
Yeah, anyway.
Uh, employees, uh, there are, uh, two changes, uh, as it pertains to employee, one that I neglected to include in the, um, in this portion of, of the budget message, it is included in the, um, finance, uh, section, and that is that we have had an unfilled halftime position for well over a year out of the finance department. We are proposing to just simply eliminate that position, it has not been needed. Second is that, um, we have in the, in the dispatch service of the public safety, a dispatcher lead position, um, that, uh, we are proposing to reclassify that as a dispatch supervisor position. That would give, uh, that individual more responsibility as it pertains to the oversight and supervision, the, um, the evaluations and the scheduling of time and so forth, that is currently carried by the lieutenant. Uh, that, the reason we're requesting that is that it will free up the time for our lieutenant to spend more time, uh, working with the sergeants and the patrol and the, and the detectives, thereby relieving our chief of a little bit more time to be, to be much more of an administrator than he's been able to do in the past.
If I may, um, that position from supervisor, or lead to supervisor, um, you know, I, for businesses that I've worked for, you know, you don't know, uh, how tricky or sticky does it get when you can see what your coworker's making, or what your new position would be, or, you know, now you have, you know, you gave us all the, the wages and, you know, earnings of the sal, annual budgeted salary, so I'm just, I appreciate it from this point of view, but now that it's out there and say, oh, you know, I don't know how close-knit the dispatch is and what it's gonna be, but, you know, what was it, $22,000 compared to $72,000, and now you're gonna go up again to supervisor, um, are you going to, you know, how do you manage that personnel thing there, and now it's all open and things like that, and, and will you be creating another lead position in that, kind of, in that?
Several questions, first of all, we would not be creating another lead position. Uh, it would simply give the, this individual more responsibility in supervising the dispatchers. It would also give the, this individual a slight increase in their salary. It would also give this individual a slight increase in their salary. As it pertains to what our salaries are, I can't speak for everybody, but I can tell you that there are no secrets as to what employees' salaries are. They are all public knowledge, and they're printed in the budget. They're not printed specifically by the individual, but we're a small enough organization, you can pick it out.
Oh, right, I remember, I think this, you know, for me, I don't remember there being a, each position, this particular, I don't know, City of, Lincoln City Annual Budget City Personnel Document, I don't recall that being here before, and I think that was something that we requested, where before it was just a line item of the total, it was always there? Oh, well then, never mind.
We're required by law to include that.
I'm sorry.
So any of our employees that have worked for a little while just know that their salaries are public information.
Okay, thanks. No, it's fine.
Okay.
I have one little question. You mentioned that the lieutenant supervises, the dispatch supervisor currently, do we have anyone in that position right now?
No, we do not, yeah. And the lieutenant, yes, that's correct, and we do not have a lieutenant at this point. Salaries and benefits, they're common to all operating costs in accordance with the provisions of the union contract, specifically the police union contract. The police employees will receive a 2% cost of, cost of living salary increase. The city is negotiating a new contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Union, known as AFSMI, at the time of this writing, and that we're expecting to have completed sometime in the next couple of months.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a question?
I had a question about the money devoted to the sewer projects. Is it, and I feel like I need to sort of apologize, as a new person, and I could ask something that's a no-brainer for everybody, but I'll go ahead anyway. If, if there's an expected inflation rate of 3.9%, and we can devote that money to the sewer projects, wouldn't there normally be expenses that naturally increase because of inflation, and how do we...
There are.
There's a conflict there.
There are. However, what we are proposing with this budget is that we maintain and keep down the operational expenses so that the increases will go to capital. It's one of the benefits the water fund has had for our debt and our capital projects. We've been able to use the water fees to be able to cover those projects. Sewer has not had that privilege. As a result, the last group of really large projects that we have done have been through a property tax bond. And we'd like to, ultimately, what we'd like to do is get it so that the fees are sustaining the cost of capital as well as the cost of operation. And we'll discuss a little bit more when we get to each fund on their forecasts for these funds, and so that you can see a little bit of where we're going and what the staff's strategy is towards the future.
Since we're on this, I circled 3.9%, and, you know, you're, we have a 2% cost of living increase, but a 3.9% of inflation, and we're only doing it to the sewer and water. Are we proposing or thinking about raising everything 3.9%? I mean, why just sewer and water?
No, we're not, and the simple answer is because we can make the budget work without having to request that. It's the only fee that we're proposing at this time.
Didn't we remove two years ago, didn't we transfer a lot of that sewer fund so that it would go, I get stuck on that. We had moved a bunch of money from operations to construction or something, and now, now we're seeing that it's a deficit now? Is that what, is that what, that what happened because we...
We had moved some money from sewer operations to the construction fund to complete a couple projects that were underway. We happen to have a more fund, a higher fund balance in the operations fund than our $600,000 target, so we had, we had the ability to do that, but the rates are not at a current level to, to provide, you know, the million dollars a year that we would like to have and that we would need in capital.
So as a comparative against other cities' sewer and water rates, where we, as Lincoln City, are below standard, I remember many years ago that we said we didn't increase water and sewer rates for a very long time, was that, we're still trying to catch up to a similar city standard?
We do compare well. We have updated the comparison that we did last year with several cities and planning probably to present that with the water and sewer fund budgets.
We'll present that on the 30th.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I believe you've provided in the, in the past, a history of the rates. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
I think I brought this up at city council, Ron, is PERS, and a discussion of the impact that's going to have on our budget.
Yes, and you're asking, what is the impact?
What we're looking at.
It does have an impact on the budget. We are expecting that the rates, well, the rates will increase by 20% next year. We're preparing for that by a 10% increase this year, 10% increase next year. You'll see as you go through the, as you go through all of the different funds that there are some, some costs that have increased. One of those is PERS, one of those is the medical insurance, and then one of those is IT, GIS to some extent, but not as great. And so, yes, and generally what happens when those rates increase, if you're trying to hold the line, which is what we've been trying to do, is that means something gets cut somewhere else.
And we have no expectation of any lump payment due? I was watching the news today, and I saw one city was hit pretty hard.
The total amount that we're carrying in our financial statements is somewhere around $1.7, $1.8 million, which we will eventually have to pay. And as I mentioned, the state is providing a way to pay off some of that early with some incentives of a match, I believe it's a 25% match. And so with the 10% increase that we're looking at for this year that would just simply get banked, we're looking at taking advantage of that, of that match from the state to pay off a portion of our debt.
Okay, just so I'm clear, if I may, we're doing a 20%, we're looking forward to a 20% total increase, and a charge on top of that that we need to start negotiating with the state about?
No, no, no. They're two separate things. Our rates are expected to increase 20% every two years.
Okay.
Okay. The amount of the unfunded liability that the city carries is that $1.7 or $1.8 million.
Right.
Now, the state has come up with a new program where we might be able to pay at least some of that down, okay? Theoretically, if we do, that would drop how much we would, how much our increases would be. However, we're not going to drop at one point, we're not going to pay $1.7 million, so I don't know what the full impact of that would be against our, our future rate increases.
I'm actually just kind of curious, is the money that we contribute to PERS, is that sort of going to a statewide pool, and then the state pays out to pensions? So there was, I don't know if people are aware, there was an article in the New York Times just a couple of days ago, and actually about half of the article talked about Oregon's unique liability with PERS, which the rules have changed, but apparently the state is paying some really substantial monthly bills for certain individuals, so that doesn't, I assume that doesn't apply to people who came out of Lincoln City, right? So we're paying the bill for some doctor in...
No, no, it applies to us. We have employees at all different tier levels in the, in the public retirement program, and the amount, of course, that we pay into it is based upon the actual aerial studies of how much they expect to pay out over the next three, four decades. And so, yes, it, like I said, the financial statements would indicate that this, our portion of that unfunded liability is about $1.7, $1.8 million. Okay. Okay. Revenues, if you go to page three and four of the budget message, we're still on pages three and four of the budget message, okay? Property taxes, property taxes make a total of, I'm going to just mention briefly, our four largest revenue sources for the tax-supported or governmental funds, so this does not include enterprise funds like the water and sewer fund. Property tax makes up 38% of our total revenues. Property is subject to taxation, includes all privately owned real property, land, buildings, fixed machinery and equipment, manufactured homes, and personal properties used in business. There's no property tax on household furnitures, furnishings, personal belongings, automobiles, crops, orchards, business inventories, and certain intangible properties such as stocks, bonds, and bank accounts. The second, and we have been using, property tax to support our sewer bonds. The property tax rate, estimated for the general fund, is based on the same rate as prior years, which is 4.0996 per $1,000 of assessed value. The increase in the property tax revenue in the proposed budget is a result of the increase in taxable assessed value and new construction. We are limited in that amount that can be charged to 3% for the taxes on people's real property. Transient room tax is our second largest source, which is...
If I may stop you there, before that we get to that, is, I think we talked about it last year, but the construction, new construction, is a new, yeah, have we looked into that again, or is that still, is that still like a, we don't want to do that? I mean, we have the highest percentage of buildings since before 2008 right now going on, and it just seems like it could be, what is it, 1% or half a percent, and then the state gets an eighth of a percent of that, or something? I don't, I can't remember the exact thing, but, you know, if we're doing really well and, you know, I don't know, I just, I know, I don't know. I'll bring it up.
This, this budget does not propose an excise tax, but we can certainly bring back information on, on the, on what it would mean, both as far as revenues and the impact on, on, on construction. Second transit, the second largest source is transient room tax, which accounts for 34% of total revenues for the tax-supported funds. It's distributed according to the city charter, which is spelled out in the budget message, and I will not go into detail on that. I am going to ask some accounting changes that, that affect this budget that came out of a result of our audit, and I'm going to have Debbie do that.
You'll, you'll see in the, in the budgets that have transit room tax revenue, a flattening of the estimated TRT revenues and proposed TRT revenues. This was kind of a surprise. We've always had really steady growth in that, all the way through 1617, and when part of the year-end process is to book an accrual for what comes in July, and we usually go through mid-August. And for a reason I haven't identified yet, that accrual was pretty low in 1617, and that actually made the total TRT revenue for 1617 very flat compared to 1516. So I'm not exactly sure why we're, we're still trending to have a good increase in this year and next year, but I'm a little more cautious because of this, and so we're just, we're forecasting and projecting a lot more conservatively than we, than we did in the prior year.
What percentage of auditing are we doing?
We have been doing $40,000. This budget will propose $30,000.
What percentage of, what a percentage of audits have been done versus the 1,400 VRDs that are licensed against what is actually being audited?
I will have to run a report for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Debbie, how much of, we have an accounts receivable for TRT?
Yes.
How much, or what percentage of the expected revenue is accounts receivable that may be dated?
Yeah, it's in our audited statements. I can pull, I can pull that up for you. It would be about a month and a half's worth.
Without having firm numbers, is it very significant? 5%, 10%?
No, because we're on a government account, it's lovely government accounting. We're modified accrual, which means you accrue only what you get in the near future. So we've only, our receivable is only what we've received like July and maybe halfway through August, so it's a month and a half worth of receipt, of stuff that we've actually received. So it's not...
Disregarding governmental accounting and modified accrual, how much do we have outstanding that's aged? You do an aging, don't you?
Yes, we can tell how much is outstanding based on what's been reported to us. Unlike a lot of revenue, you can't, you can't really know how much you're owed until somebody submits you a report, but we can, we can tell of what's been submitted to us, what's outstanding. I don't think it's a significant issue, but I can run that for you certainly.
Mr. Chair, staying with that, Debbie, I, what I didn't hear you say was, it softened, but have you, some kind of percentage increase? Are you forming an increase in TRT revenue of X percent?
I am, I am still, do have an increase in the proposed budget, but it's...
No increase?
No, I do.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought.
It's 3%, I believe.
3%.
Might be four, but I think it's three, but it's, it's on a lower number than what we were expecting, and so it just, it just, it looks bad. It's, it looks sad, maybe I should say.
3% is not sad, come on, it's still there.
The third largest source of revenue is intergovernmental revenue, which comes from either state shared revenues or through franchise fees. That accounts for 7% of the total revenues, and then finally, I'm sorry, state shared revenues, they're all state shared revenues, such as the vehicle revenue allocation, the library service district, 911 tax allocation and so forth. At 6% of the total revenue is franchise fees, which comes from the fees that are paid by the utilities for the privileges of operating on our ride-aways.
Can you, the marijuana taxes in the intergovernmental revenue, right?
I'm sorry?
Marijuana, marijuana. And then, when are the franchise fee negotiations come up? Do you have expiration dates? Are they every two years?
No, they're, they're unique to the, to the individual franchises, but they're generally between 10 to 20 years. We are in the process of continuing to work with Charter, which we're hoping to bring to you in the near future.
Is WAVE now CoastCom?
WAVE, WAVE is, yeah, they're the same company, and I believe, I don't know when their, when their renewal date is. Okay, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the general fund forecast, so if you will turn to page seven of your appendix.
At the very back of your book? Not in mine.
The last tab.
Well, it's not in the back, it's not in the back.
Second, second to the last. Say again? Second to the last tab.
Well, you took out your tabs.
I don't have any tabs back there, I've got this.
There's tabs in there.
Appendix.
After Urban Real...
I've got an appendix.
Urban Real Appendix, bingo, thank you. Page seven, thank you. Indexes are always in the back.
The, as you look at the general fund forecast, there's a couple of things that are, that stand out, that are important to, to bring up as we discuss really what our staff goals or strategy is as we go forward and proposals as we go forward in the future. The first is that you'll notice that the budget will continue, the revenues are projected to increase, well, first of all, let me go back, the projections are both historical and forecasting. Much of it's based upon what our past experience has been, especially in the, in the expenditure area, and also looking forward to trying to anticipate any items that might drastically change it. You'll notice in the revenues, the total revenues are expected to increase somewhere around 2.3, 2.4% per year for the total revenues. You'll notice on the expenditures, if you look at the proposed amount for fiscal year 18... 1819, this would be special one-time capital, that includes the $945,000. You'll notice that that is decreasing so that by the time we hit fiscal year '23, '24, we are out of that. That is diminishing quicker, faster than I would like. And, and the reason for that is that when you look at the increases, you'll notice that the increases of expenditures are generally increasing more than the revenue rate is increasing. So the, so what you end up looking at is that by the time you hit '23, '24, you're having a minus $862,000 change to your fund balance. The strategy that we are proposing as we look forward is that our expenses for our salary, or, no, not salaries, our total expenditures do not increase faster than the projected revenue. It's basically an unsustainable proposition if you try. So that is the goal that we're, we will be shooting for as we go. So when you look at these changes, note that that's a reflection that's based on some historical things and not necessarily based upon what we're trying to get to as we look forward. Now, having said that, as any organization knows, there's always a need for an influx of new funds. The funds that there's, as we look at the source of funding, it's a, new sources of revenue that's available to us, it comes through property development of the cities, of property development, both on private property and on city property. Cities carrying a lot of property, of which there is no property tax coming in. As we shift that over to become housing and commercial developments, as we see the private property develop into housing and commercial development, you will see that increasing in our property tax revenues. In addition, as we are looking towards the sell, our first sale of property for the villages, the proposal that I will be coming back to with the city council is that it's threefold. That the first, we, we paid about $2.5 million for that property. The first is that we repay those funds from which it came out of. The second is that anything we make above and beyond that, that we, we bank, almost like an endowment fund, about 80% of that. And then we use that each year as a revenue source through interest rates, where we would use about 80% of the interest that would come off of that, plus, and then the other 20% would go to continue to build it up. I will discuss that in much more detail with the city council as we approach this, but that will, that question will be coming sooner than later as we are looking at, at the, the sale of the first eight or nine acres of that property.
Chair.
Sir.
Ron, where, you said the first thing would be to repay that money where it came out of, which is...
Out of the different funds.
It came out of a variety of funds?
It did.
Okay.
Could you, we had how many building permits this last year? 100? So, I don't, I mean, it's not important. What I'm trying to figure out is, per, per hammer, per however many houses of our average house price, what is the anticipated annual estimated contribution, you know, per whatever? You know, I'm just trying to think of like, how many houses are going to need to be built in order to make up a difference? You know, if there's 100 houses and the average price is $300,000, and each house contributes $12,000 of property tax a year, I don't know. I'm not a homeowner, so forgive me, but what would that give us? You know? I mean, I don't know. I'm just looking for a number to see.
If we can calculate that.
80 houses? But I mean, what are the, you know, again, I don't have that information, so.
There's a rule of thumb.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair. Are we calling apartment complexes houses? Are we single-family residence houses?
What I'm looking at is the effect on the property taxes by whatever is put onto it.
Okay, but we, we're asking a question about the individual contribution from a house being built, and I'm just...
What I'll do is I'll look at the, I'll look at the last year to see what, what type of development we have had, and then the tax rate that, tax revenue that's brought in, and that should give you a general idea.
And is there a way to get a breakdown by zone? Because I'd be very interested to see what percentage of that was in the VR zone. I know there's quite a bit of construction going on there.
Sure. There is a general rule of thumb that is important, and especially important to us because of the transient room tax. Generally, property taxes do not cover all of the costs of expenses. With what you're paying on your property tax, you're getting far, for your individual home, you're getting far more service out of that. That's why sources such as the transient room tax become so important, because they are, first of all, they're more elastic, so that as the economy grows, they have a chance to grow with it. Now, the downside, the double-edged sword on that, is that because they're elastic, when the economy turns, then it would turn as well. Okay. Any other questions on the forecasting? Yes, sir?
I have a question on why, why the revenue forecast is only an increase of 1% when you look at historically, it's, well, last year is 2.9, and the year before is 3.1, and the year before that is 4.2.
Allow our forecaster to answer that.
I think we were extra conservative this year in our proposed revenue.
Why?
It's in our nature. I don't know.
I seem to remember having the same discussion last year, and I think that that's extreme and, and not practical and, and not realistic.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I think I'd ask this question, I don't know how to frame it, and, but we're looking at, I think we're at 30% is second homes in Lincoln City, correct? Non-owner occupied.
It's about a third, third, third.
Okay. And we think we talked briefly at one point about the impact of the new tax laws and what effect that will have on our property values and perhaps ownership opportunities. Has any of that been taken into account? Because I'm seeing, I'm seeing a, a, a report from the National Association of Realtors that we can expect a 10% decrease in our property values here, just based on that alone, and others are saying it's going to be even more.
That has not been played a part in the property tax estimate. Property taxes are assessed, are assessed on assessed value, which is generally quite a bit less than market value, because they're only allowed to go 3% a year. I'd like to see how that plays.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think we're looking at a significant drop in property values, and I think we need to account for that somehow in our forecasting.
Based on that, this would be, that would be the conservative 1% increase, so...
There you go. I knew there was a reason.
Kevin, Kevin, that might be your...
I consider that, I consider that bogus.
Actually, what, what we'll do and bring back for the next one is that I've kept track of all of the expenses for the last 12 years, and we'll go back and check our revenue projections versus, our budget versus actual, to see how close we come. If we're close, we're in great shape. If we're not, we'll know that. Okay, if you now, we're going to go to the general fund revenues. If you will go to page six of the budget, not the budget message, but of the budget itself. These are the, the worksheets.
I had a question about page five. Debbie was talking about the transit room tax forecast. Do you think that, that those numbers are realistic?
The estimated 1718 and 1819?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I do, because when I'm looking at, you know, what we've gotten year-to-date and, and looking at, you know, what percent we get in the remaining rest of the year, I mean, I'm getting numbers that are quite a bit more than this. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what's causing this anomaly of it being flat for a couple years.
From 1516, 1617, it's such a small increase.
Right.
Then it's a pretty good increase then.
But it seems to be making up for it in 1718, so I don't know if there's maybe a significant payment that normally comes in in July that didn't come in July this year, or...
Could be too.
I haven't dug, I haven't gotten a chance to dig down into the details to figure that out.
And then you've, you've predicted about $100,000 increase for 1819.
Yeah.
I mean, we reduced the TRT compliance reviews. We can vote on that later to increase it.
Sure. You can, if you'd like.
Thank you.
So the document that I'm looking at now is the budget fund summary, which is on page six. Starts with resources and expenditures. Okay. I'm just going to highlight these before I get into the expenses. The total budget, including the beginning fund balance, is $21,728,118, or a 5.2% increase. The total general fund operating budget, which, which I've defined as the total revenue less the beginning fund balance, is budgeted to increase by $405,857, or 3.4%. You'll note, as we mentioned, that the ending fund balance, at the bottom of the page, is And that is divided into two sections. The contingency is $1.9 million, and the unappropriated fund balance is $6,775,456. The policy that we adopted last year and we're trying to carry forward is the, is the keeping a $6 million rainy day fund plus the $1.9 million contingency, and that's why I'm requesting. One of the things that you consider is that we use the $775,000 as a kind of adjusting case as we're looking at the police department, police building. Okay? All major revenues are budgeted to increase. Building permits on page seven, account number 4202001, is, is budgeted $120,000, which is an 18% increase, and it reflects an increase in both the actual and the anticipated building within the city. Community center fees, or number, account numbers 4601012 and 4601013, which is on page nine. Those are lower than last year's amount, and that reflects our current history. And then you'll also notice that on page 10, 464001 and 4640201, recreation and after-school fees, those are budgeted to be higher than in the past, and that reflects an increase in the demand and what we've been able to offer as far as our recreational programs or, and after-school programs. With that, I'm ready to jump into the expenses. Are there questions on the revenue for the general fund?
I wanted to look at your pictures.
Yeah. Pass them over. Chair, could I ask, Mr. Chandler, what is the business and occupation tax under now?
Since it's, you have zero there.
It's under the OTP annual fee. OTP is occupational tax permit. I'm not sure why that happened. I created another account with the same name. I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Clarification, sorry. So the, the revenue on the bottom of page, bottom of page 10, total resources, budget proposed is $21,728,118, and estimate 201718 is 21,23417. That's an increase of 2.3%?
This, this includes beginning fund balance when we, as revenue, which just seems odd to me, because it's not a revenue. So when we do our long-term projections, we, we put the beginning fund balance down at the bottom, and so the revenues, if you exclude the beginning fund balance, the revenues are increasing 1%.
Don't you exclude the, either exclude or include it in both balances, though? It shouldn't, it should reflect equally. If the beginning fund balance is picking number $500,000, then it's going to be in the estimate of 1718 and the proposed of 1819.
If I understand what you're saying, no. And you'll notice if you look at the bottom of that, page 10, you're asked...
There's beginning, there's beginning fund balance in both of those.
You'll notice that your total ending fund balance, I'm sorry, go back to page six. You'll notice that your total ending fund balance for last, for the current year that we're in, 2018, is expected to be $8,178,324.
Where are you? I'm sorry.
Page six, third column from the left, all the way to the bottom.
That's budget.
That's budget.
I was talking about estimate.
Okay. If you go to then the last, or the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth column, you'll notice that the beginning fund balance is estimated to be $9,302,500. In other words, our revenues are higher and our expenses are lower than what we are anticipating by the end of the year, so the estimate for next year is higher. Normally, those two numbers, if everything was perfect, would equal.
Right, but that didn't answer my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Fund balance, I, I think that's part of the point, is that fund balance is changed both by revenue and expenses, and so...
Right.
And, and, and the front, you're including your beginning, the change in your beginning fund balance is part of your revenues? And in the back, we're not.
Correct, but you're not including it in both numbers, so the percentage should, should be the same. You're not including it in the projected or the, or the proposed.
If your change in fund balance is the same percent as your change in other revenues, that would be true, but if you have a disproportionate change in your fund balance...
So you're saying that that difference between the 2.3 and the 1% is the difference between the, and ending fund balance of $9,312,000, and the difference of $6,775?
Unless I have a calculation error in my percent, yeah. So I will double-check that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Sometimes Excel formulas do get messed up.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, one other thing before we leave this to go to the city council. Please note on page six, at the very bottom in italics, excess of resources over expenditures is a negative number, $637,044. The reason for that is that the, the beginning fund balance is estimated to be higher than what we were looking at our policy would dictate, and so we're using a portion of that that we saved on this year to account for expenditures for next year. City council. The total city council budget is $27,714, which is $1,097, or 4.17% greater than in 2018. The primary reason for this is information technology, internal service fund. As we mentioned earlier, or as we mentioned during the urban renewal meeting, that includes a records management program of $65,000, which was not part of this current year's budget. And so that is spread out over the different departments that use computers, which is all of them. Any questions on city council?
Yes, I have a question about the current year $2,000 budget item for postage, shipping, meter lease, and now it's zero.
That was, I believe, for quarterly mailing that had been added to the budget. I don't know.
I'm sorry, I can't barely hear you.
That was for...
Let me verify that.
A quarterly newsletter, I think.
Right.
Yes, that was for a quarterly newsletter.
Surely not.
No, I'm, okay, that's wrong.
Mr. Chair, isn't that possibly a zero this year because it's being included in the billing?
It's, it's included down in the other supplies.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Just got messed up.
Any other questions on City Council's department?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I could, quick question, Mr. Chair. Is Channel Four, is that covered under information and technology? Where is that?
Channel, Channel Four?
Yeah.
It's included in the information technology budget, yeah, in the internal service. We used to have a separate fund for it in the past, but we've moved that a couple of years ago.
I think that was called the Public Information Fund, and that's one of the closed funds. Okay. Under Administration, which is page 11, I'm sorry, page 12 of the budget. City Administration Department includes the City Manager's Office, Human Resources, and the City Recorder. The total budget is $687,610, which is 29,386, or 4.5% increase from the 2018 budget. Some of the highlighted difference on that is that under salaries and benefits, that is budgeted to increase by $24,240, or 4.2%. Please note a couple of significant changes that we already discussed. We are anticipating that medical and dental insurance will increase by 10% this year. That's a significant jump for us. We have been averaging around 3% to 4%, so that, that is a big jump for us. And then the retirement is expected to increase by 8% or about 50, just about $5,200. The materials and services is $80,531, which is 5,146, or 6.8% increase. The contracted services include our code publishing website. When you log in onto the city's webpage, you can go and actually search our codes. That is functioned through a code publishing company, and also the insurance company that works with us. And then, we've already mentioned IT.
Yeah, you have, the trainings almost doubled for administration, and not, the other departments don't have such a significant a change. Is there a reason for that? I mean, it's...
Trainings, training went from $9,600 to $10,000.
Sure, sure. $5,800 to $10,000.
That's what's been...
That's the estimated...
In other words, we're going to come...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I'm sorry, thank you.
That's a good point, Mr. Chair. They, when I do the comparisons, they are from the 2018 budget to the 2019 budget. It's not actual, it's not the estimate of the actual to the budget.
And why is that? It seems like, it seems like doing the budget based off of what you actually see is what has taken place would be more accurate and a more accurate projection than off of last year's guess.
It depends on why your actual is lower.
Yes.
What we don't want to do is create an incentive for people to spend money. So if you don't spend it, that doesn't mean you're going to lose it. So if for one year you choose not to go to a conference, we don't take it away because you didn't actually spend it, because that creates motivation to spend when you don't really need to. On the other hand, if it's an actual change in spending patterns, then we do look at the actual and change it. So it just depends on the circumstance. In training, it's more elective whether you go or not, and...
I mean, that, sorry, that's a good answer. I mean it more in a general, not just on training. So, because if you look at, say, salaries, the budget proposed is $408,000, which is a larger increase than the 4% that, that you mentioned, Ron, when it's based off of the actual. It's not a larger based off of the budget, but it's larger based off the actual. I can understand if you recognize that you had an unfilled position for part of a year that's going to come back in, so you, that's going to be different, but beyond that, it seems like, in this case, actually, you eliminated a position that was budgeted, or you're proposing eliminating a position that was budgeted for last year, if I understood, a half a position, if I understood you correctly. So that's not reflected in that.
In finance, we did, not in...
Oh, that's not in administration.
But we do look at, we do look at actuals when we go through. And if, and if we do think it's an actual change, like, like we reduce an FTE, or there's an expense that we no longer need to incur, then we do, when we're setting our budget, we do look at the actual.
Well, if you look at the part-time and seasonal salaries, it's actually almost, almost triple budgeted for this year compared to what, budgeted for next year compared to what was actual for this year. It's very close to what was budgeted for last year, but it doesn't, that's not what was actually spent.
And that's, that part-time position is assistance for the city recorder, and we went for quite a few months without, without being empty.
So FICA and Medicare, again, same thing. You're budgeting, you're budgeting, if you're budgeting based off of last year's budget, that's not really accurately reflected, because that's not what you spent.
FICA, Medicare is a percent driven off of, we budget as a percent driven off of salary, not, not...
Driven off of actual salary?
Whichever salary. So if it's, if it's a budget, it's budget salary. It's whichever, if it's year and estimate, it's year and estimate salary.
So this, the $32,054 is based off of the estimated for 17-18, or based off of the budgeted for 17-18? Do you understand my question?
I'm looking for the $32,000.
It's based, it's based... FICA, Medicare.
It's based off the $408,000, the $9,800, and the $1,000 for the first three numbers. And when we're looking at salaries, salaries are a little bit easier to predict than, than the other ones, because we know the positions. We generally have an idea of what the salary increases are going to be, and so what you're dealing with is the fluctuation in employment.
Right.
Now, when we get into the others, like the material and services, Debbie's right, if there is a year, or maybe even two, where they're coming in under budget, I never wanted to penalize and create an incentive for people to spend if they don't need to. On the other hand, if we're seeing that trend consistently where they're coming in under budget, then we'll adjust that budget downward.
So if you look at the medical and dental, you said there's going to be a 10% increase, but if you do the math, it's actually more like a 26% increase off of what was actually spent.
Yes, because we had a, an employee that had employee and dependent coverage budgeted in 17-18, and in 18-19, it's a single-person coverage. And, and the difference, the coverage, the amount that the city pays for single versus family or combination of family dependence is really a lot different. Did I go the other way? And then we had a person who was budgeted as a single that changed to family coverage.
So it's actually a 26% increase that you're budgeting?
For this department.
Correct.
For, for, for medical?
For medical, compared to actual, not compared to budget, but compared to actual.
Oh, compared to actual, yeah.
I just think if you use compared to actual as the number you're, when you're giving percentages, that's a more accurate reflection than comparing to budget, because budget was just a made-up number to begin with.
Unless you have a change of employee or an open position, or, which we have
Certainly.
Quite a bit of. In this case, we did have a change of an employee. And that was one of the reasons for the coverage changes. We had an employee that was here almost the entire year in 16-17, and that recently changed. So, last year was real low, next year will be higher.
Chair. Debbie, why are we going up $30,000 from the 2016-17 budget?
In salaries?
No, 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 in medical and dental. I guess my follow-on question, is there anything we can do to stop the bleeding and the increase?
Hmm, not legally.
You know, is this all subject to union rules or state laws?
No, I mean, you can't, you can't discriminate against people that have a family versus a single coverage. What we can do is try to contain our, our insurance costs, because our, our experience does impact our rates, and in fact, that is why our rates are going up so high this year, an 11% increase, is because some of the experience factors that we've had. And that's where we can try to control it.
Chair, Debbie, so do your employees pay anything for their health care?
Yes.
Pay a percentage?
About 10, 10%, I believe.
10%.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
On a different subject, gasoline, fuel, and oils. I don't see a breakdown of vehicle use or reimbursement to people for travel. Is that covered somewhere else that I'm not seeing?
Travel expenses, we book based on the purpose.
On what?
On the purpose of the travel. So if you're going to a meeting, then costs related to that meeting are booked under meeting expenses. If you're going to a training session, like you're getting some CPEs or something, then the cost, the hotel and the gas and the food, it all gets booked under training.
Okay, but I know there's four city vehicles sitting out in the parking lot. I'm assuming they use gas and oil.
City admin doesn't really use...
Admin doesn't, rarely uses those vehicles.
Okay, but my question is... How do I put my question? We talked about splitting IT up equitably. We talked about GIS equitably. What about vehicles? Do we say, okay, if you're not using these, why do we have them? I would love to know...
Well, city admin doesn't have four vehicles.
Well, whatever, how many vehicles are sitting out there?
But, but the departments that have the vehicles, you'll see gasoline costs in them.
Okay. So then if Ron travels to wherever for a meeting, that's covered strictly under the meeting? And if he drives his own vehicle and gets reimbursed for that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Why do we even have it if there's zero? I don't even understand.
Well, it's not zero in all departments. I mean, departments, like, for example, the police department, it's quite, quite, quite a bit different than zero.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Administration? Okay, the next budget item is Finance. Okay. Not sure how to say about the percentage anymore. Finance includes accounting, payroll. By the way, what I will do as part of, I made a note, is I'll give you some information on how these are affected on the actuals with, with the material for next week, or two weeks from now. Finance includes accounting, payroll, utility billing, accounts receivable, accounts payable, debt service, and financial forecasting. The total budget is $781,054, which is $20,403 less, or 2.5% less than the fiscal year 2018 budget. Salaries and benefits are budgeted to increase by 3.9% over the 2018 budget, or $22,675. And as I mentioned, the one part-time assistant position that we've actually been carrying for the last couple of years, we're proposing to remove that from this budget. Materials and services, about $1,300 or less than 1% change. We are expecting an increase in our auditing costs by about $2,800. A $10,000 decrease in the TRT reviews. That's been based on some historical, what we've actually been able to accomplish, and then much discussion that we had in the last budget year, and then Debbie and I've had many discussions over this. And then we also include an additional amount, you have $3,000 for some extra training, for certification, for payroll. And then finally, under capital, we have $1,000 in capital, which is just for miscellaneous things that may come up during the year.
I'd like to, to vote on that increase on the TRT review when it comes up. Also, what was the fee that we charged for paying water and, 2.9%?
I'm sorry?
What's the fee that we charge people to use a card when they pay their water and sewer? Is that this?
Oh, to use a card?
Yeah, convenience fee.
It's a flat amount.
$3 or something, or $1.50 or something?
I think it's two-something.
There was something that you said that people don't like it.
Yeah.
So, just for the record, I don't know if it's a rec, whatever. Facebook allows people to pay people, and it doesn't charge you. The city has a Facebook page. Could it somehow be linked to the account where people could pay via Facebook? I know it's crazy, but it wouldn't, if it doesn't cost you anything, and people, and it makes it easier for people to pay, and it's a, and it's something, it could be something. I don't know.
Well, the thing that we will need to, one of the discussions that we've had, and this especially as it pertains to the water and sewer, is a discussion on whether or not we should charge an amount for using a credit card when people pay online. We have run some numbers on that when we get to the water and sewer. We will bring that up to you and have that discussion, because it does have a financial impact on the city.
Sure, I mean, you're, you're being charged per transaction, and then you're passing that on to the person paying. But if there's an easier way, that's more convenient for people to pay, and, you know, whatever, then why?
Yeah, it's, it's covered by Visa, MasterCard rules.
Sure, I understand.
If they allow that, I mean, I'd be happy to.
Well, I pay, I pay people all the time in Facebook. If you buy me something, I'll pay you back, but I don't know how it applies to a government entity.
And they get the full amount that you charge your card?
And it does not charge, correct. It does not charge me. If you, if you buy me a coffee and I say, I'll give you the money, I give it to you via Facebook, and it doesn't charge either of us. I don't know how that applies to...
Well, that's something to look at.
Well, there you go. And it would be better in...
I suspect you're not using a credit card. I suspect you're doing a bank payment.
It's, it's my debit card.
Okay, I don't know that...
A debit card's different.
And credit card. I mean, it's a credit card. I mean...
We pay our city bill automatically online. I don't think we're charged a fee.
No, we're not allowed to charge a service fee if, if you're on automatic payment.
If you can pay for Facebook online, you can pay the city online.
I'm just talking about a debit, I'm just trying to engage people in order to that, to decrease the distaste people have about being paid, you know, having to pay to call. If they call in on the phone and say, I'd like to pay, they're being charged to call with their thing. Not everyone has the wherewithal to have a reoccurring payment to negate those fees. I'm just saying, there is something out there.
Like I said, we, this is a discussion we plan to have during the water and the sewer portion where that hits the most.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions on Finance?
Are we going to come back to the TRT, or is that later?
I, I made a note that that's something that
The audits.
The chair wants to look at changing, so I've made a note on that.
Okay, so we're going to talk about that at another point?
The review?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, I'm just gonna come back up.
Generally, we make a list of items that someone wants to possibly vote a change on, and then we do, we go through that at the last meeting.
Let me ask, I'm assuming that your request now that increase?
Correct.
Riley, do you remember last year? I know last year we had a long discussion about this, and we increased it last year, didn't we?
Forty.
And what was it? Do you remember what it was?
Saying they only spent $28.7.
Do you remember what it was the year before last year?
I, I thought we had it at 40 each year since we started it, and Counselor Ward, I believe, really wanted to, he wanted to lower it down to 5,000.
Yes, that's why I remember the discussion, because he was pretty adamant about that.
I, I, you don't, I don't care what it is.
And it would help, you know, $28,000 got us how many reviews? Or how, out of the 1,400?
Yes.
What is the total number of applications that are out? You know, you go to one website and there's 1,400 available, so what, you know?
But it looks like in 2016-17, we actually spent $46,117.
Who was, yeah, okay.
And, Mr. Chair, since that's the other question, is what's the result of, you know, I mean, do you, do you see more compliance or less compliance? If you raise that, okay.
There's certainly, I, I would, I would have to expect that the compliance is better. There's been, there's a lot of education that happens in this process, so like, just as a common example that we use, a lot of entities aren't aware that you need to include cleaning fees when you're calculating your transit room tax, and that was an education process that's provided as part of this review, so...
Okay, we're ready to move on? Okay, the next one is library. I'm bringing our librarian here to help with this discussion. Just a few items to, to mention that I think are significant that come from the budget message on the library. The Driftwood Public Library serves all residents of Lincoln City and Lincoln County through its membership in the Lincoln County Library District. The estimated population that it can serve is 15,506, and as of March, the library has 12,170 registered users, which I find that pretty remarkable, actually. And receives approximately 128,500 visits. That averages 352 per day. In 2000, in this, 2016-17, the library circulated a total of 191,511 items, which is an average of 15, almost 16 checkouts per registered user. which is an average of fifteen, almost sixteen checkouts per registered user, and is open seven days a week, 58 hours per week. It is a member of the Ocean Books Library Consortium, which includes Newport Public Library and all the Tillamook County libraries. The operational budget is equal to 932,963, which is 22,774, or two and a half percent greater than the fiscal year 2018 budget. Salaries are expected to increase by 31,386, or 4.7%. And then materials supplies are expected to increase by 19,388, or 8.9%. A couple of items to point out, and the effects that they have on this budget. The first is the integrated library system, which I'll let Kirsten explain in just a minute. Will increase by $2,800. And then the increase on the, from the IT will be 21,406. And there are no capital plans, purchases, or for this fiscal year.
Would you like me to explain the integrated library system?
Yes.
All right. So that's a fancy way of saying, basically, the, the software that forms the backbone of all of the library services that we provide. It functions as our, our inventory system. It lets us know what books are checked in at the library, which ones are checked out. And then also tracks all the patron records, so it lets us know who has the materials and, you know, when they're due back. It also automatically sends out email notification to people for items they've placed on hold, that is, items they've asked to be held in reserve for them. Books that, or items that might be overdue, or other billing communications. And includes a, an automated phone system for folks who don't have access to email that does send, puts out the same messages. And it, yeah, it tracks all of our, any bills that are associated with accounts. Really, it's, it's the thing that allows the library to run the way that it does. So that's our, probably our most significant expense, other than the actual materials and, of course, salaries.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think last year, if, if my memory serves me right, there was a new electronic database or something that, that we, you'd asked for that got approved?
There was one that we were considering. We ended up choosing not to move forward with that purchase. What I learned from other libraries that used that, because it's a cost per use, they saw their budgets going up very quickly, because it was very popular, which is, you know, it's good when our materials are popular, but when it costs money every time someone uses it, it didn't seem like it was a sustainable subscription for us to get involved in. So we ended up electing not to, to sign on to that service.
Ron, where was that in the, if we look at last year's budget? I don't remember what, was that the eBooks and databases?
Yes, eBooks and databases.
So what, that was 15,000 that we budgeted last year, and there's 14.5 in it this year. If, if we didn't do the 15,000, what, what do we have budgeted in 14.5?
We, I had, I had budgeted $6,000 last year for that particular subscription. What we ended up doing is deciding to stick with other, a variety of different databases that we subscribe to, where we, it's a set cost every year, rather than growing.
Yeah. The $4,500 comes first with an extra $1,000 for the Overdrive Advantage. And I'll let Kirsten explain that. And then $3,500 for other eBooks and downloadable digital content.
And that other eBooks is sort of a placeholder for items that we might find throughout the year where we would like to purchase them for the collection. The Overdrive Advantage program, if anybody's familiar with our eBook platform called Library2Go, that's the company that owns that. And we get most of the books that we have access to through that, through a statewide consortium. But we also pay an additional fee to be in the Advantage program, which lets us buy additional copies of popular materials just for our patrons. So for example, our library now owns downloadable copies of all of the Harry Potter eBooks. And if somebody from our library wants to check them out, they don't have to wait for everybody else in the state to work through the holds list first.
As a user of that service, it's very much appreciated, because when we didn't have that, I would get on the waiting list and it would be months before things would go through, so.
Chair, another question?
Kirsten, looking at the part-time and seasonal salaries?
Yes, sir.
The actual, the budgeted for last year was 117,955. The actual is 136,384. And I noticed we budgeted only 121 this year, so we're actually budgeting for $15,000, or about 10% less than what we spent last year. What's, why the, the kind of gap?
Can you help me with that, Debbie?
Yeah, I actually do the year-end estimate, so Kirsten's probably a little.
Oh, sorry.
So, the, the, the year-to-date hours on the part-time seasonal are trending high. And so I ran the, I, I put the year-end estimate high. However, just because people use more hours doesn't mean that they can have them again next year as far as budgeted FTEs. So I kept your FTEs the same, even though I'm estimating this year to be higher than what we budgeted.
Mr. Chair, I'm trying to remember. We also had a discussion, and maybe it's more policy, but I, I thought we had a tier of accounts receivable or overdue book charges and, you know, the, the cost that it took you to, you know, pursue those or not pursue it, and whether we were, I think we had an amnesty.
Yes.
Program.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess my question is, can you update me on? I don't see accounts receivable of overdue books. And do we not have one now, because we don't bother to check, which is okay? I'm just curious.
No, we're current, we currently are still collecting five cents a day in overdue fines. However, the, the library board has recommended that we go ahead and look at eliminating that five cent per day overdue fine. What we found during our, our amnesty was that a lot of people were avoiding using the library who owed very small amounts of money. They came in and said, you know, I'm so happy to come back, I haven't been using the library. And then it turned out they owed less than five dollars. And we think that the public relations of having to collect these five cent fines are to the detriment of people using the library. So we are, we are working on a proposal to just go ahead and eliminate that. And then we'll be coming to council with that specifically.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Kirsten, I'm just curious, because the library is under the Lincoln County Library District. Does the district have the authority to raise taxes?
The district.
Through property taxes?
Uh, they can go out for a ballot measure to.
Yeah, for ballot measures?
Yeah.
Okay. Of the number that you have in the membership database, how many of those are city residents?
You know, I don't know that right off the top of my head. I could find that out. I would say, I would hazard a guess it's around three quarters, but I would really want to run some reports to get some good numbers on that.
Mr. Chair. Okay, just, if we can go back to the numbers about, how many people use the library or have cards? Can you give me that number again?
Um, what was the number from the?
1,170.
It was, it was a little over.
1,170?
1,170.
Thank you.
And how many residents do we have in our city?
Um, about 8,500.
Eighty-four hundred. So we're about 4,000 are guaranteed to be non-residents, right?
Yes. Although I will say that, you know, we, we keep our card records for two years. So some, some of that number of 12,000, you know, 12,000 or so is probably a little high, given that if somebody moves out, the card remains active in the system for a year and a half before we go ahead and eliminate that active, uh, that card.
I'm comparing it to what we do with the, the community center. We have a resident rate and we have a non-resident rate. Now, no, you can't freeze free, but it, it just seems to me that it, it would, I, I'm from charging people for stuff. This is a good service, and I don't think, like we were talking about, a quarter for a locker, it, it is ridiculous to even say, well, we don't want to do that. I mean, it's a quarter. You get a, you get a good service and it helps to maintain the facility, so you can come back to it. And it's the same thing with the library. I just, I never quite understand this give-it-all-away attitude. If, if it's a good product, if it's, and I'm not suggesting a huge charge, but it just seems that there needs to be some skin in the game for people to appreciate it. And that we're gonna, people can't figure out that they owe five bucks. I, I'm stunned by that, that, how do you not know you owe five bucks? And how you can't come and just say, square it up?
So when you say skin in the game, are you referring specifically to fines? Or are you referring to charging people to use the library?
Charge to use the library. A fee per book.
Okay. So, um, we do, I mean, people do pay for this library. This library is paid by, no, it's paid by the taxpayers already.
Okay, we've got eighty-four hundred of them here.
Registered, those are, those are, that's, people who have library cards, everyone's paying in for the service to be there. Not everyone's using it.
I, I understand that. I understand. I'm just trying to find a way to kind of stem some of the bleeding. They have a huge budget. And I just, I, it just seems to me that we should be.
I think it's also important to realize that the, the library, we do receive funds from the library district. It's reciprocal, so that county members use the library. And in return for that, we get funds from the county library district. About, I think, almost $230,000 this past year. It might even be more than that.
And I really, I'm not looking for justification. I know I'm in the super minority here, but I just wanted to have my say in this matter.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to realize that people's taxes have paid for the library, so.
I am well aware of that.
Okay.
So, yes, absolutely.
Quick one. The money that the county or the district reimburses the cities, I go in the general fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's based on a formula that involves the number of items that are checked out to county residents, and also the, the city's funding of the library.
Do you have any other sources of revenue?
Those are our primary sources. We have, you know, saw a small amount of grant revenue that we receive. And then for non-essential, you know, enhancements, we have the support of the foundation and the Friends of Driftwood Library.
So you did fifty, you have 50 hours a week, and you did 190, I'm sorry, 128,000. And by comparison, the community center's open 102 hours, and it did 90,000. Has there been, or when was the last time that the library might have been considering staying open longer? I know Sundays is a short day, and I've had a lot of people, you know, that would wish on a nice rainy day and the kids are home, and it would be nice to do. Has there been thought of that? Yes, it would increase the budget, and yes, it would increase these things, but has there been at least an outreach to people if they would like that kind of service extended?
When we, we do frequently poll our patrons to find out, you know, are they using the library? When are they using the library, things like that? We've done assessments on a regular basis. We don't get very many, I guess, people saying that the, the hours are too short. Most people are pretty surprised that we're open seven days a week. You know, I'm always willing to entertain suggestions along those lines. But right now, I, I would say that we would definitely need to add more personnel if we were to be open any longer, any more hours than we already are.
Also, you know, we have the community, those little library boxes and things around the city, which are like free, what do you call them? Free what?
Driftwood Little Libraries.
Driftwood Little Libraries, which got me thinking, you know, there's been, in council, we were talking about the need for internet for children to do their homework. And we have 12 computers downstairs. I don't know the percentage of children versus adults. When I attend the library, it's largely adults. You have two computers near the young adult section that sometimes have teenagers. But, you know, I have, my son's in fifth grade and he has to do homework. And, you know, would it, would it be here? Is there a way, or could there be a way to have, similar to the little libraries, remote access points, like say at the community center, where there are library computers for people to do their homework? You know, there are lots of kids there often, and it would, or there, are there places, city buildings, that could have library services throughout the city to provide Wi-Fi or the opportunity for that? You know, we have, I don't know, $945,000 that we're looking at doing something with. And, and if we could provide a way in which more people have access, you know, to their school, I'm talking about children, you know, and with the similar protocols and safety measures, and, you know, you can't go, you know, whatever it is that you have here in the building.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, that's definitely something I would love to explore further with, maybe with the community center and with the council. I think that there's definitely opportunity for that. Another thing that we, that some libraries have done successfully is they've purchased wireless hotspots that can be checked out by patrons. And I don't know a whole lot about how that works, I would need to do some research, but that might be another option for finding ways of bridging that digital divide.
All right, thanks.
I had one question about this department. There's an expense for building maintenance that's unique. It's never been budgeted before. Just wondering what that was.
Six-two-one-zero-zero-zero-one.
Page 16.
Second item on page 16.
If I'm remembering correctly, I think that might be an error. Is it like a 2,000 something?
2,000, I know, $29.
Yeah. I think so. I, I remember, I think that there was a, a, a community center expense that was accidentally charged to the wrong account.
Well.
Yeah. I discussed it with Mary, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's, that's an error.
And then I thought we did approve your $21,000 for the back office desks?
Yes. Yeah, that is, that's gonna be, that's in this fiscal year.
That was just for the one time, okay.
Yeah, so that's, actually, in about two weeks, we'll be getting those installed.
Any other questions on the library? Okay, municipal court.
Thank you.
Municipal court volume is trending down for the current year that we're in, this fiscal year. In 2016, 17, the court received 1,191 citations. So far this fiscal year, as of April 1st, the court has received 581 citations. Court fines and revenues are estimated to hold steady at an estimated $119,448 for the fiscal year 2018. We use a modified cash of accounting, and it ties revenues to monies received and not necessarily tied to the citations issued or the volume. Total budget is $72,001, which is $1,020 greater than the 2018 budget. Are there any questions pertaining to municipal court?
The, the other type of court is what, again? The other, where, court of record?
If it was.
We are not a court of record.
We are not a court of record? And the cost, the cost to make it a court of record?
I'll pull that up. We had that from last year.
Yeah, we did. Right. I still want to look at that again and then try to see if it would save time, especially with police having to drive down and, or they do it via Skype? Well, well, show me how many Skype calls we have. But, you know, and then have it, what could be done here versus in Newport? In addition to helping people not have to drive to Newport.
Ron, or Mr. Chairman, is, one year, I don't know if it's a trend. I'm just wondering, is the way our staffing was the last year with police officers in search? And as I recall, Chief Killian used to always, those new officers like to write tickets. You know, old officers, you don't give more warnings, do more policing. And so I'm, I'm just wondering, is now that we're closer to capacity and with newer officers, you know, there might be a surge of ticket writing, revenue?
Slow down out there, Dick.
I have.
Chair, I did my police ride-along when I took the Citizens Community Class, and we stopped 12 cars, and there was not one ticket given. And it was a young off. officer and it was all education he provided.
Should've written a ticket.
We're not police officers, we're not police officers, it's their call, they're the ones that wear the badge.
Well, we can always bring up that, you know, new chief, right, and tell them what we, we think.
He'll be up in just a few minutes.
Oh, in just a few minutes, good, okay. He's heard the other departments, huh?
Okay, city attorney budget?
Not yet, chief.
No, no, you're not quite yet. Okay, the city attorney budget, uh, accounts for expenditures related to the city attorney's operations, the operational budget is two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, uh, six-hundred-and-sixty-four, which is six thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars less, uh, than this year's budget, salaries are scheduled to increase by three-point-eight percent or seventy-five sixty-one over the two thousand and eighteen budget, materials and, uh, services, um, are scheduled to decrease by twenty-four percent or fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty, the biggest reason for that is the, you'll notice on page eighteen, I'm sorry, I haven't been giving you the pages, eighteen, legal services, which is item six-two-zero-one-one-five-two, which is legal services for attorneys that are, um, outside attorneys that we from time to time have to hire, we are cutting that in half from forty thousand to twenty thousand to reflect some of the completed lawsuits that we have recently finished. Um, let's see, and there's no capital associated with this, are there any questions pertaining to the city attorney budget?
My question is if there's money there to research removal of the deed restriction at Regatta Park.
Not in the city attorney budget, we decided to apply those in the, in the, in the budget where they would be coming out of, so in this case, it would be the parks budget.
Parks, okay, thank you.
And just for clarification on that, uh, we, city council authorized spending seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, we spent that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, not seven thousand five hundred, and that got us, uh, an estimate that for ten thousand dollars, we can file a lawsuit and the argument we would use in that lawsuit to argue that the deed restriction, uh, was no longer valid, that does not guarantee that it will be removed, so ten thousand dollars if it's unopposed and the judge agrees, so...
No lawsuits ever guaranteed.
Debbie, this is another one where if you look at the medical and dental insurance, that's a twenty-four percent increase over actuals, what we're budgeting, we're budgeting for a twenty-four percent increase over what we actually spent.
Wait, do you want to go on a bit further? Wait, so in the seventeen, eighteen year, we had a new employee added to the city attorney budget, I suspect that that employee was not hired July first and so we probably had a few months where we did not have that expense, it is, um, actually right, eleven percent right off the budget, so...
It's eleven percent right off?
It's, it's eleven percent increase compared to budget, which is what we would, uh, expecting.
Mr. Chair?
So I believe the reason why the year-end estimate is low is because we had a vacancy for a few months.
Right, but if you look at the seasonal salary that, or the part-time salary, that doesn't reflect, it's a little bit lower, but it's not twenty-four percent lower. Understand what I'm saying?
It's twenty, twenty percent would be four thousand, right?
Are we done?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A quick question, um, memberships and dues, I'm not familiar with the legal profession, do you have to get relicensed each year or what's, and is that included in this?
Yeah, the, um, the Oregon State Bar has a three-year reporting, uh, period and you have to meet certain, uh, continuing education requirements, so they typically take classes online or go to conferences, usually the city attorney conference, I can go to the International Municipal Lawyers Association and get all of them done at once, which is sometimes very useful.
So you get credit from these classes you attend?
Yes.
There's no exam you gotta go take and, okay, so that's covered in membership and dues?
Um, no, I think membership and dues is probably just the Oregon State Bar, the Lincoln County Bar and the International Municipal Lawyers Association.
That's correct. So that comes under training then?
Would come under training.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, along that line, I, I'm sorry, no, I, um, I know attorneys pay into the PLF for malpractice insurance, how's that handled?
I'm sorry, can you define what you just said?
That, there, there's a statewide fund that covers malpractice insurance for private attorneys.
Okay.
Government attorneys do not have to pay into the PLF.
How is their insurance protected?
It's through the, through the city's insurance.
Through the city. Uh, so I have another question, if, uh, on legal services, if the budget is cut in half because some lawsuits have been settled and of course, I guess, there's no way to anticipate what could come down the line next year, but I noticed that number's still quite a bit less than a couple of previous years, so, I like, is there some historical basis that we can predict that twenty thousand is a reasonable number or?
Usually I, in the past, when I've asked for a line item for outside counsel, isn't based on expecting lawsuits, 'cause you can't really predict those kind of things, um, if we have land use appeals are probably the, the most common and I'm fairly comfortable handling that kind of stuff in-house, um, when we pull in an outside attorney, it's something generally that's not involved, uh, in a tour claim, which means our insurance company isn't paying, 'cause they would hire and typically, uh, pay for the, uh, attorney for a tour claim, so it's just a small amount of unanticipated things that would come up. If I'm putting money in the budget or asking you guys to put money in the budget, it's like, well, we have things we wanna do, maybe wanna hire a contract prosecutor, for example, uh, the municipal court is authorized to prosecute all crimes that occur within the city limits, all misdemeanor crimes that occur within the city limits, so in the past, when I've asked in other jurisdictions, I've asked for money for outside counsel, it was for a contract prosecutor, so that when I plea bargained a case and they wouldn't agree, I'd say, okay, we'll go to trial, oh, I'm not doing it, the guy that loves to try cases is gonna do it and for eleven hundred dollars or whatever his rate was, and that would usually bring them to settle because they knew that there was money there to back up trying the case. And usually we're not, I can't predict what, who's gonna sue us, but, um, I'm hopeful that, uh, this year will be maybe, uh, less, uh, argumentative than the last couple, so...
Okay, um, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a suggestion, we have twenty minutes before it's nine o'clock, I'm going to suggest that we complete the planning and the building inspection, but not try to tackle economic development tonight, I suspect that one will have quite a bit of discussion because there's some pretty significant policy changes.
I would agree.
We'll plan on then going with the planning and building inspection and Mr. Townsend will come up, this is on page nineteen of the budget, while he is, uh, coming up, um, I'll give an overview, planning pro, the planning department processes and monitors land use applications and BRD permits and engages in the long-term planning, the operational budget is equal to six-hundred-and-forty-one thousand eight hundred and one dollars, which is thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars or four-point-eight percent less than the two thousand and eighteen budget, um, salaries and benefits, um, are expected to be twenty, two-point-three percent greater than the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget, which is eighty-eight hundred dollars, materials and services are expected to be forty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven or fourteen-point-four percent less than the two thousand and eighteen budget, um, a couple of, a couple of, uh, highlights that I wanna mention before we turn it over for questions, under contracted services, you'll notice that we went from two-hundred thousand dollars to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, um, there are two projects that we have proposed for this year, one is for, um, the completion of the comprehensive plan for which we have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars and the second is for, uh, archi, to hire an architectural consultant for commercial design standards, uh, which would budget, uh, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars, you also noticed the GIS, uh, which is item number six-two-zero-two-one-one-zero, uh, it has a change in it, that's a reallocation of the time calculations, there's no capital proposed, so I'm gonna let Mr. Townsend talk a little bit about the, the two contracted services and then we'll answer any questions.
The, uh, commercial design standards consultant, actually, we have picked a consultant for that and, uh, have, we have not yet entered into a contract on that, we're just, uh, working on the, on the final terms of the contract, we expect there will be some expenditures on it in the current fiscal year, but then the, the majority of, of the expenditures will be in the, uh, uh, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year, this is to, uh, simplify and sort of rationalize the, uh, several different sets of commercial design standards we have right now, we have a, uh, a set of design standards for all commercial properties in the city other than Nell Scott, Taft and Ocean Lake, and we have specific sets for each of those, uh, three areas, um, and this will, uh, try to keep the, the separate character of the, of the areas, but make the, uh, make our, our standards, as I say, more rational and, and easier to use, the other is the comprehensive plan update, the last time we did a comprehensive, comprehensive plan update was in nineteen ninety-eight, um, and this plan would be intended to carry us or to, to plan for it, uh, going up through, uh, twenty forty, um, we have started, as you know, the, with the, uh, visioning project, um, which will be finished in the next month or two and that will then feed into the comprehensive plan itself, which, uh, will be, uh, a, a fairly long process with a lot of public outreach and, uh, just trying to bring things up to date, 'cause a lot has happened, a lot of things have changed since nineteen ninety-eight and, uh, we want to, uh, make, have a plan that makes, makes more sense.
Are there any questions? Chair?
Question? A couple of questions, um, on the, you, you mentioned that the fifty thousand for the commercial design consultant was going to be the beginning of that project, is the fifty thousand gonna be the entire, will that cover the entire project or is that just the first step?
Um, it probably won't be the, the entire project, um, we, we advertised it for fifty thousand, uh, one thing I've learned this year on the, on the visioning project and other things is that fifty thousand dollars doesn't go very far.
No, it doesn't.
And, uh, so, uh, actually, our consultants came in with a, a bid of fifty thousand or, or, you know, with a, you know, I don't know, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars or something, but with, uh, an additional, uh, optional suite of, of things to be done, so we're gonna be looking at that and, uh, then that will be, the council will decide on, uh, whether, whether to do those, those extra things or not, I would expect that in the current fiscal year, we would probably be looking at somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars.
And on the, the comprehensive plan at a hundred thousand, is that the whole, that's gonna lock up the whole plan or is that just?
It should be the whole thing, we haven't, we haven't advertised or anything for you that, that yet, so...
Seems fairly low to me as well.
Pardon me?
Seems low, seems like a low estimate.
You know, it, it probably is, uh, it might, it might be, um, you know, I, I used to do consulting, but it was, uh, twenty years of inflation ago, uh, so I'm, maybe I'm still locked in on that, but it is a little bit low, but we've been successful, uh, getting good products for, for a relatively low price on our, on our recent consulting.
Have there been any staffing changes in, in your department, last year compared to this year, if I look at staffing salaries?
The individuals...
The budget proposed is just slightly over what was actually, it doesn't even account for the three-point-four percent or whatever it is we're talking about.
There are two reasons for that, um, one reason, there, we had a, a new employee replaced at other employees, so instead of being a two percent increase, that position is a three percent decrease and we had a second employee that was getting a five percent supplemental pay for doing some...
Oh, 'cause they were doing, I, I don't...
Some out of, out of job.
Yep, yep.
And so, again, instead of being two, it's minus three.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Um, can I ask what the citizen involvement program is?
That, uh, state law requires us to have a citizen involvement program, it's, the, what the state requires is pretty limited, it's about, uh, getting information out essentially and we, we have a, a system for doing that, uh, citywide with, that meets the standards, but, um, what we wanna try to do is, um, go beyond that, um, with, um, not just, you know, uh, uh, the, like, notices of public hearings and that kind of things that go out, but, uh, more involvement like with neighborhood associations and so on.
And then the other was, um, the twenty-five hundred dollar for other supplies.
That, um, you know, sometimes we need, uh, oh, notebooks or whatever, you know, there's things that just come up occasionally, uh, like with, uh, some of the, with the visioning project, we had a lot of sort of really miscellaneous things that...
Donuts.
Are recurring, you know, I mean, crayons and balloons and whatever, you know, for kids, that kind of stuff's gonna come up.
But donuts go to meetings, not other supplies.
Police meetings.
Don't believe them, chief.
Any other questions on planning? Okay, building inspection also falls under the planning jurisdiction, um, just by way of explanation, um, there's a little bit of uncertainty, um, in building, in the building inspection, um, because of some actions that are being taken by the state and that is that we contract our building inspector services, uh, that we are supposed to get this week some new regulations from the state, that may not allow that to happen any longer, which means we would have to hire somebody, um, that's, uh, more than likely it's going to be challenged, but it has created a level of uncertainty as to how we will do business as it pertains to building inspection, as mentioned, we've been, we'll know more this week when the rules and regulations come in, I got a call, I think it was Friday, uh, that, uh, that, uh, informed us that this would be coming this week and then Richard and our attorney have been following it very closely, uh, to see the effects of it, so assuming no changes based on that, um, the building inspection, again, accounts for both staff and contracted services, the budget is two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars, which is twenty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars, uh, or ten-point-six percent greater than the two thousand and eighteen budget, um, the salaries are set to go up by nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars or one percent greater and materials or services are expected to go up by fourteen-point-four percent or twenty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five and I keep forgetting to do this, my apologies, we're on page twenty-one of the budget, um, contracted services are expected to go up by twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars or fifteen-point-three percent and this reflects both the actual and the expected increase in budget, in building activity, um, that we have been and expect to continue to see, um, that is based both on experience and... That is based both on experience and as there are projects that we know are in the works that will have an impact on us, that we try to account for those, and there's no capital that's associated with this budget.
Question?
Yes.
Ron, why no GIS support?
When we updated the estimated time spent by GIS staff on building, it, I was told they're really not spending any time, so we made that zero.
The, the planning side uses the GIS, the building side really doesn't.
And the inspection doesn't use it at all?
Right.
There's one other thing to note, if you look on page 21, six-two-zero-two-zero-zero-six, you'll notice in the past we had 10 and then $15,000 in the state surcharge budget permits, this year we put it at zero and next year we also put it at zero, we're carrying that in accounts payable. Have eight more minutes.
Six minutes.
Any, any, any comments from members present on things that we've gone over today that did not get said?
Chair?
Chair, after having done this last year, I would say this new format of going through it is way simpler than the hopping around we had to do last year to keep track of what was where.
And Chair, if I may also compliment the manager and staff for the presentation, slide presentation? Well, that, that actually is not necessarily for you, it's for those that are watching to have something they can actually read. Last year you couldn't read any of the stuff that was up there.
It's a lot of lines and a lot of lines.
So I would, I would like to suggest, as I have the last couple of years, that that kind of presentation is best served to the citizens versus this information, which we do have on our website, but I also suggest that something like that also be put on our website. Oh, very good, okay.
If I may?
Sir?
And I, I do like the slides too, but, and Ed, no offense to Ed, I'm not a big fan, I, I mean, I, I, no, I did, I voted I want, I, I, in this instance, I'm just not sure it's the right thing for the message.
I don't know, it kinda feels like a budget to me.
Little cart, little carton.
Tentacles.
It's a little carton.
Specter, right? Okay.
We have quite a bit of things to follow up on, we will try to get those to you as quickly as we can and not wait until the next, a next meeting, so that you have plenty of time.
And that is the 30th at 6:00 PM.
One other question, could, could we have Diana's spreadsheet emailed out?
Email it, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Deanna?
I'm sorry, Deanna, sorry.
Dick, you have anything?
Just a reminder, we, urban renewal at 5:30 and then this at 6:00.
All right, thank you all very much and we are adjourned.